We're gonna be starting in about one minute. Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the City of Bloomington, work session of City Council to order. I wonder if we could have a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Good evening. Alderman Lower?
Yes, here.
Alderman Sage?
Here.
Alderman Mowambeway?
Here.
Alderman Sterns? Oh, sorry.
You've got an old lip.
I have an old lip. Sorry about that.
But I am here.
Thank you. Alderman Schmidt?
Here.
Alderman Black?
Here.
Alderman Hallman?
Here.
Alderman Fruen?
Here.
Mayor Renner?
You need Alderman Painter.
And Alderman Painter, thank you. I really do have a... Sorry.
We have a full house. That's the main thing.
Yes, we do.
And we're gonna go ahead and start with public comment for our work session. And we're gonna start with Donna Boland, and then Alton Franklin, there's only two.
Yeah, I'm here to talk about the park dedication. I was at the March 9 meeting, and I spoke. But I also would like to draw your attention to the fact that the minutes list, that the motion was for pay the requested tap-on fees, but the agenda actually was for the parkland fees. Anyway, the city has a long history of essentially floating loans for developers, interest-free, for decades, actually. And hopefully, this developer has paid the $161,000 owed to the city for the tap-on fees that have been due since 2001. And I hope he's also thankful that the assessment for past two accounts, according to Chapter 16, Article 2, Section 32A, was not enforced. And I would also like to sort of reference this in light of the Budget Task Force, because I think that it would be beneficial to consider analyzing these fees with a fiscal impact model, which would mean revising methodology and structure for the tap-on fees for sewer and water, revising the road impact fees, which currently are substandard, using density in the formula, and collecting the developers' fees in advance so the city's return is timely, and basically reviewing policies related to site-specific infrastructure improvement associated with development projects to ensure that the risk is shared. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Alton Franklin?
My name is Alton Franklin. I live at 508 Patterson Drive, here in Bloomington, Illinois. You know, I've heard the expression a number of times, "Here we go again." We're talking, and we're talking, and we're talking. We're gonna talk about the philosophy, the thoughts behind, the structure of what is the reason, the raison d'etre, for all these things we do. Then we're gonna talk about our vision. You know, the most powerful ideas are absolutely fascinating and absolutely useless until and unless you take action based on those. Now, it's a safe place not to do anything, because that way, you can't be said that you didn't do what you said you were going to do. You just didn't do. Simple point in fact is, the citizens of our fair city don't elect people to a coffee club. You're supposed to be doing things for the city, for the citizens. That does not mean we're determining who to charge more, whether it's property tax or the biggest consumers. That doesn't mean that we're gonna determine whether we're gonna spend $2 million on the arena, or we're going to talk about cutting services to foment as much fear, uncertainty, and doubt as we possibly can, so that we can ram our agenda through. I said the last time I was up here, and I mean it, I'm gonna rub your nose in reality, folks, I'm gonna be here every time, and I'm gonna talk until I start seeing constructive, positive action. I'm not gonna stop talking then. I will be more than happy to congratulate you on a job well done. But first, you gotta do the job. You gotta step off with what you're doing, and that means to do things constructive for the citizens. That doesn't mean walking away from any citizen that's talking. That doesn't mean any kind of action, whether it be positive, negative, or inconsequential. It means coming out with a positive plan to move our city forward, to make things better, not just for ourselves, but for our children, and for our grandchildren, and our great-grandchildren, and on and on. If you start on a downhill trend, that has a tendency to be real tough to pull back up out of. It's time to fish or cut bait, folks. It's time to stop talking and start doing the good things that the city needs done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to our items under number 44A, reconsideration of parkland dedication fees. And we have about a five-minute presentation and a 10-minute discussion. We're gonna have to be pretty tight on time, because we obviously have our regular meeting that begins at 7:00. So first, we have marks by Larry.
And Mayor, could I ask first that we have Jeff Jurgens, corporate counsel, just make a quick comment on this matter to introduce him?
Yes, as set forth in the background memo, this item was before you on March 9. There was some misunderstanding on whether or not that item was gonna be actually discussed and acted upon at the meeting. So Mr. Beaufeld requested an opportunity to come discuss this directly. That's why we're bringing this back to you tonight. And staff is here. We'd be happy to answer any other questions that you have on this. But again, we're looking for direction from the council on this.
And as you've noted on the bottom here, work sessions, et cetera, we can't have a poll done through a motion and a vote of a matter. It's not a formal action, but it would be a sense of the council motion?
Right. In this sense, we would have to come back with an amendment to the annexation agreements. So we would need to do some public hearings and some other things. So basically, we'd be looking for, yes, we're interested, staff, and you're doing that and exploring that. That would be the direction we'd be looking for.
Thank you. Questions? All right. Okay, Mr. Hales?
No, I'd just add that after Mr. Beaufeld speaks, we can come back and make a final staff remark that I'd like to share with you at that time.
All right, Mr. Beaufeld?
Hello. I'm not Mr. Beaufeld.
I know.
My name's Julia Davis, and I'm the attorney for Mr. Beaufeld. I will speak briefly, and then I will let Mr. Beaufeld have a few minutes himself. We're asking you today to reconsider a decision that was made regarding requiring him to pay parkland dedication fees. He did donate, dedicate 2.41 acres in the same subdivision last year. The value of that land was approximately $70,000. This parkland dedication fee is based upon the fact that he came back to the council seeking a final plat on an assisted living facility to be built. I'd like you to look at the purpose of what the land dedication fee is for. It's to serve the people in that area as far as parkland is concerned. So if you are going to require the fee be paid, then that money is supposed to be held and to be used for those residences there that are affected. Now, to give this fee, to compute this fee, you took 84 living units of the assisted living facility, okay? And that's based upon what the city dwelling unit average household size would be. And we all know that an assisted living facility does not have the same amount of people in a household as a single-family unit. There's gonna be one person living in each of these units, if it's even full. And this was calculated on 84 dwelling units. 84 dwelling units. That would be the equivalent to 84 houses, and we're talking about one facility. So we are asking you to reconsider allowing his dedication of the 2.41 acres to be credited and just be applied in lieu of this fee. We're not even asking for the amount, the $29,000 fee, to be credited. We're just asking that it be waived, so if this happens again, we won't be coming back and asking for the same thing. And now, I'll let Larry talk.
She spoke on some things that I was gonna speak on, but I'll read my part, so it'll be fast. And I just had, it's gonna take me a minute. I dedicated parkland, and I paid for it, and dedicated that land myself, not the seller of the land originally. I wanted the park, and so did the seller of the land, the Kellys. It is clear in an ordinance cash or parkland, but not both. Intent is cash or land, and not both. Assisted living is not a residential use. And it says they call this a residential use. How can it be called a residential use? If I tried to put an assisted living in an R1 district, as an example, I'd be laughed out of the whole place. It won't work. It is not residential, so that should not be there, nor should you ever, in the future, have an assisted living as a residential area. I will say this, many fees in the city, as far as I am concerned, and it's just simply my opinion, and that is, in this day and age where we want to get an employee base, an assisted living, just assisted living will bring in 30 to 40 employees. After all, that's what we're after. So anytime you have these fees that are anti-business, that's really bad for the town. And in my opinion, I'll just finish it up real quickly. In my opinion, no assisted living facility should be required to pay a parkland fee. And in my opinion, and I don't know this to be true, but I would guess there has never been an assisted living in Bloomington Normal to ever pay a parkland fee before. I don't believe that that has happened. Maybe somebody knows different. But I know, and I've talked to some other towns, and they never have a parkland fee in lieu of cash or cash, you know, parkland fee. Yeah, that's double-dipping. That's my opinion. Any questions?
Actually, what we'll do is, I think we'll turn it over to the staff, and then we may come back to you with questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, I just wanna make one or two quick comments. One is, as you've read and watched before, one of the growing trends throughout the nation is the aging population. And cities like Bloomington are having to focus more and more, what kind of leisure services do we have available for that aging population? And so, there is a definite need to ensure that all residentially-type developments pay the parkland dedication fee as required by city ordinance. I think there's certainly some unique aspects of this transaction, which was discussed, and we wrote in great detail of some of the complexity and issues. But even in light of the information tonight, we don't see any reason why the city should consider reversing its decision to require the parkland dedication fees be required for this project as we recommended back in March. So we'll leave you with that recommendation. Thanks.
If I could just ask one question, and then we'll open it up to the entire council. Would this, if we were to do this, would this set a precedent in the future, then, for others to come back and ask us to waive fees? To waive, if we were to waive? I'm sorry.
Well, first off, it is my recollection. I'm not 100% certain, but any kind of residential development, including an assisted living, is required to pay those parkland dedication fees, if they don't dedicate land. So I don't think this is the first time this has come up. Those have been paid. And keep in mind, I think this is a unique situation, given there was the requirement, when Mr. Beaufeld purchased the property, that there be some parkland dedication made. That was by the seller of the property, you know, not the city. And we believe that you could infer that that particular requirement would have been taken into account in any kind of sales price for the property, because that was gonna be land that he really couldn't use for other revenue-generating development. So given the reasons we wrote up and addressed there, we think that, again, this is a unique situation. I don't know that it would be necessarily precedent-setting, because it's rare to see a transaction like this where the original seller mandated some land dedication. I'm not sure that, I've only seen a couple of examples like that throughout my career. So these facts don't show up that often in land development.
Questions, comments by members of the council? Alderman Hallman, and then Mowambway?
Did, I'm trying to think of the two newest assisted living, Luther Oaks, I believe, has an assisted living component, and the Meadows at Mercy Creek. Did either of them, were either of them required to?
And once again, I'd have to look exactly in that. Remember, on Luther Oaks, was even a nursing, a nursing unit, but we'd have to get back and look specifically. I'm not aware that there was any waiver, but we'd have to verify that and factually report back to you.
Thank you.
That was gonna be my question, just for the sake of consistency, to see if we had anything else in town that was a similar facility, and we require them to pay parkland fees.
And we could certainly research that and get back to you, especially before our next meeting, and share that fact with you.
And where does that put us, then, at this point?
It's a critical piece of information for us to decide, then.
Right.
Yeah. And what I'm going on is the ordinance, because I was here two or three years ago when the ordinance was modified to ensure that any residential-type use and that be required. Even what we're trying to get away from is, well, what was the zoning? Sometimes you can have business zones, but you can have a residential use within that commercial or business zone. So I'm not aware of any waivers since then, but we'll certainly research that and report back to you.
Okay. Alderman Schmidt?
I also just want, for clarification, what is the zoning? I mean, people who live in assisted living facilities are residents, but what is the zoning for assisted living if not residential?
And let me see if, do we have Tom here? What I do know is, you can have some of these type facilities in a, as an example, some of our business zones, B1 zones and so forth, do allow for residential-type development, multifamily and...
And so, if that's the case, that's a special use permit, and then we may not require a parkland dedication?
The ordinance, in the past, used to say that the park dedication fee would be predicated upon what the zone of the property was, which I believe was an error. Hence, we came back to the council, recommended that be changed, because it's not so much the zone, it's what's the use. And if it's a residential use, it was gonna have a demand on parks and recreational facilities, then the fee should apply. And that was the change we made. So that's, and I haven't had staff come to me and said that there's been any waivers on residential-type use, even if it's an assisted living, since that ordinance was changed.
Kevin and Jeff?
Yeah, we believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that this may be the first residential or the first assisted living facility that's come across since the change in the ordinance that would require those parkland dedication fees. So we're not sure that in the past, and we'll have to go back and verify that, that assisted living facilities did pay that fee. But there is a requirement that even if it's zone C1 or B1, and this is zone B1, that if it's used for residential use, then those parkland fees do apply.
Right, okay.
Should we table this, then?
I think at this point, we have a piece of information that we need before we can act. Is that the sense of the council? Anyone else? Okay, that's a critical piece. We just wanna be sure, then. Has there been, have there been anyone else who had this waived? And this is, how many years ago? Is it three? Is that right?
Something to that nature. Do you recall, Kevin, how long ago it was?
Mark Huber was still here when that change was made, and I think it was like two, two and a half years ago.
It was before I was mayor, so I was just, but I wasn't sure when. Okay. All right, well, that type of information we have, yeah.
I'm sorry. I guess my question would be, are we specifically referring to whether this has applied to Bloomington in the past, or other municipalities like Bloomington in the past?
No, just whether or not, since this ordinance changed, has anyone?
We're not interested to hear, you know, in other similar situations and like municipalities. Yeah, okay, okay.
Just Alderman, front?
Thank you. It seems to me that there's some misunderstanding or some misinterpretation that's occurred. And so I just throw it out for the council members to consider, is there any kind of a compromise that we can reach, rather than it's either this or either that? Do we, do we agree?
I think that's probably up to us, then. That's what staff is asking for, is direction. They've made their recommendation. They've given us the context. We need another piece of information, and then we move forward.
I think that's something that we ought to think about, other than the one specific question that's come up, because it seems like change has occurred, and maybe there has been some confusion. I'm not necessarily advocating one way or the other. I'm just saying it's a pretty gray area, it seems like.
Kevin?
Along with that, I'm wondering if we shouldn't look at the timeline, in terms of when Mr. Beaufeld originally proposed his original project, and then the change with the assisted living at that point. And look at what, you know, when we enacted that ordinance, and when that would have taken effect.
Thanks. Maybe if I could clarify that. So if he's, I mean, essentially, it's taken effect now, right?
But, you know, again, we changed the rules on these business laws. Halfway through the game, and I don't think that's fair. So from, you know, in defense of business here, we probably need to stay on the same page. If he was originally approved prior to the ordinance?
Approved, I see, I gotcha.
Or if he was approved after the ordinance for the R1 business model and the assisted living. So I think there's more than a couple ideas at play here.
Okay, thank you for clarification. All right, at this point, we really have to move on. Thank you all for your help, and we just need a couple more pieces of information before the council will make a determination on that. We're gonna move next to the review and discussion regarding the Budget Task Force meeting philosophy on the organizational structural deficit and priority-based budgeting. And I'm gonna turn this over to Alderman Sage, who's the chair, one of the chairs, and we've got another co-chair in the audience, Alderman Sage. Okay, thank you, Mayor. And just also, want to acknowledge our other council members on the task force, too, Alderman Black and Alderman Baragas. So again, thanks for their help. The task force, again, has a fairly short timeline in order to bring back some budget scenarios to help close the multimillion-dollar structural deficit. Notice, I'm not putting a number on that, because we're still waiting to see what our colleagues in Springfield are gonna do with us relative to any kind of budget adjustments. But we do know it's gonna be a multimillion-dollar structural deficit. And so to that end, what would be really helpful to, and really what I'm gonna need to get specific feedback on, are some questions that kind of outline some philosophical positions by the council. We need to be able to create some parameters for the Budget Task Force to work within, relative to developing the budget scenarios that we come back with. And so I have four questions. And some of these, I think we've talked about even at budget workshops before. But what I thought I would do is just kind of touch on each question, and then looking through, either through some, you know, declaration, or some sense of the council, or something like that, make sure that we have just a very clear understanding of the position of the council, on some of the philosophical attitudes by the council related to the budget. So the first question is, there are three, there are three options for closing the multimillion-dollar structural deficit in next year's budget. These include only spending or service decreases. And, you know, you might hear folks describe that as living within your means. So only spending or service decreases. The second one is only revenue, meaning tax or fee increases. And then, thirdly, is a combination of those, and whether it's 50-50, or 80-20, or whatever. I'm interested in some feedback, as I think that the Budget Task Force is. In other words, if we were to say that only service cuts, we only wanna, with the amount of revenue that we have, it's gonna equal the number of services that we deliver as a city, you know, kind of that live-within-your-means approach. If we understand that that will mean, we already have a multimillion-dollar deficit, right? We're already drawing down out of our unreserved fund to cover elements in next year's budget. We know that's not sustainable. We know that's podium speak for, we can't continue to charge credit cards each month and expect that we're gonna get better financially, right? So what is there, is there some sense, do you want me to convey back to the Budget Task Force that, you know, yes, only look at service cuts? There is not majority support to look at any fee increase. And also, too, please understand, I'm not looking to create, you know, some, I guess, political theater for some folks who might hear what's going on tonight. It's not saying the council is gonna raise taxes. That's not what, what I need is, is there a philosophical place that the council says, you know what, either look at either cuts only, or taxes only, or some combination of both of those things? So, you know, in the interest of time, you know, I'm interested in trying to get through this as quickly as I can. So is there anybody who is, if you think that we only do this with cuts only?
I'll step up and say yes.
Okay.
Are you taking these one question at a time?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean...
Already got all the questions?
Yeah, I guess, you know, so, so then, at the other end of that, then, is just taxes only. In other words, we don't really make any changes to the way that the current budget is structured. We're just gonna raise taxes and fees in order to cover the deficit. Is anybody in favor of that approach? Okay. That would only leave, then, one other option, which would be some combination of the both, okay? Which is gonna be some... Which is going to be some, some fee, or, or the consideration of some tax or fee increases and, and consideration of cutting of some services or programs. Okay? So, is, am I to conclude then that that is acceptable, that, that philosophical position is acceptable to the council? Is there anybody that does not agree with that, maybe with the exception of, I don't know if you would also support that as well? But is there anybody that does not support that philosophical position?
David, and this is writ very large, right?
Yes.
Because there's so many ways of talking about that.
Yeah, I just, I want to make sure that the task force, that we spend time on something that's ultimately going to be acceptable to the council. And, and that, that, again, because we have such a limited amount of time to work. So I'm just looking to, to try and create some of those parameters, some of that space where we can operate in. All right, thanks very much. So some combination of spending and service decreases along with some tax and fee increases, okay? Second question, and, and I know there are some folks on the council now who weren't at our session last year. At, at our planning session last year, we, we as a council, that council took our first, made our first attempt at prioritizing kind of city services, the large buckets, those large aggregates of services. And, and the priority that we came up with, with number one being the higher priority and number six being the lower priority, is the higher, number one, the highest priority was safety and security, which generally means police and fire. Enduring sound infrastructure, which generally means would, would be public works and/or the water fund, which is an enterprise fund. A vibrant local economy, which we have our economic development coordinator, some of the activities related to that, around community development. Healthy, livable neighborhoods. And, and again, that's going to be community development, some of the pace, some of the planning and code enforcement that goes in. But recognizing too, that infrastructure is a part of a healthy and thriving neighborhood. I mean, there are no clear, absolute division lines between these priorities. A revitalized and thriving downtown. And then number six, something that we just referred to at that point as distinctively Bloomington, which are the community amenities like parks, library, et cetera, which I expressed as, generally that would be the Parks, Recreation and Cultural Arts Department. And then I, I put down library by way of our, the, the input that the council has on the tax levy for the library from a, from a priority spending perspective. Those were the priorities that we came up with. Then, you know, I also listed then some of the other, we, those, those departments are our citizen-facing departments. Those are the ones that our residents interact with on a regular basis. We also have other departments here at the City Hall that are more general in nature that would support a lot of those citizen-facing and those resident-facing departments, like, like our finance, accounting, administration and so forth. But, but I guess I'm, I'm interested, are we still comfortable with the priorities one through six that the council, the previous council? And again, and no, no past council commits or locks a, a future council into that. And so that's why we, we want to take a second to have this conversation. These departments, are, are we still comfortable in this prioritization? I mean, is there anybody who would, would seek to, to reprioritize or change any of those?
Couple of questions. Infrastructure, does that include solid waste?
I, I, I think we can probably, and that's one of those, we can probably put it anywhere. If, if you want to make it part of enduring sound infrastructure, I mean certainly the, the, the maintenance of our, our streets, I suppose, and, and the proper removal of solid waste and management of the solid waste on those streets, I think could probably have some hooks to infrastructure, but probably.
I, I'm just reflecting on some of the conversations we had leading up to the adoption of the FY16 budget and conversations about solid waste and whether or not it is a core service of the city. And I happen to believe it is.
Okay.
I'm not sure everybody does. The other thing is, this is kind of coming out of left field, but as I look at the list, I don't see pensions. And I don't know, it's not a, it's a priority, but it's a different kind of, it doesn't fit nicely into this list. And I don't know.
Probably cross-cutting.
Yeah, it, it kind of weaves its way through all of it, but, but I, I don't want to do what we see from neighbors to the south in, in Springfield and not really think about the pensions. I, I put that out there as something that, that looms very, very large overall.
Absolutely. And, and thanks Karen for mentioning that. I mean, that was certainly something that was talked about even at today's Budget Task Force meeting. That, that is certainly one of those, those big items in the room that, that we're going to have to look at as, as part of the total cost that we have, that we have delivering services.
I just want to make a, a comment. Pensions to me is a debt service. It's no different. And I'm not, I'm not saying it's less or more important than any other debt service, but it is a, a debt service. It's a fixed expense. It's something that's definable. We know what it's going to be. Yes, we could put it off. Yes, we could pay a little bit more aggressively. Those are things that we could do and we have done in the past, but it's a debt service. And so, the, if you look at it in terms of a business, or, or taking care of the city's business, it, it's something that we are obligated to do regardless. It's just like paying down our bonds, our bond debt, or any other debt that we might have incurred over, over time. So, I think it's important to try to take the, uh, take the feeling away from it and, and treat it more in terms of a debt that we owe. Thank you.
Just to clarify that, the, the bonds, we have no choice.
Right.
Pensions, we have, we, we got an award last year for our aggressiveness, but that doesn't mean that.
There are a number of.
One option might be that we aren't quite as aggressive over there.
From a financial standpoint, there's many different models that we could use to pay our debt. But, that being said, it's still a debt, and it needs to be treated as a financial debt, and that's, that's my point here.
Thank you, Alderman Black.
Thank you. And for, for me, I don't want to muddle this up a little bit, but I also kind of want to put some, I don't know, seeds for some thought from the council. I've never really been a big fan of this numbering one through six, because I think all of these intertwine and interweave. And it's, it's very easy, and, and parks and rec usually tends to be, unfortunately, JIC back there on, on the chopping block. And it's unfair, because it's, you know, this time of year breeds a lot of calls that I get in my ward of, of kids, you know, out and about at night. You get these kids in programs, what's the city going to do to get them off the streets? And that's something that a parks and rec would take care of. So, we have to, if we start cutting programs from that department, that may impact our number one priority. I don't think anybody up here is going to disagree with safety and security and infrastructure as our top priorities. But I, I think it's incumbent upon us to, to really understand how these things interweave. And, and, you know, the, the other part too is, the general departments, all, all the kind of backend work that the citizens don't see, I think that's incumbent upon us too to, to see that there's a value to that and then when we start to get away from some of those, those long-term strategies in those departments. I mean, I, I work in human resources, so I know no one's ever clamoring to increase human resources and the resources that they have, but there's a cost that goes along with that that's subjective over time. So, I mean, I guess my comment to this would be that I'm supportive of, of the, the order in which we have it. But I think it's important for us to, to, to consider that these are all interweaving, as Kevin pointed out, with, with debt service versus pensions, and, and I, I can see that. But we need to keep that in mind as we kind of stake out what we're going to be looking for.
Alderman Frue.
Thank you. And I agree with Scott's comments there. Let me back up and say that I did miss the city council retreat last fall, or whenever this was. My qualifier is, because I think it's very important, I would have been there. I think I was out of the country, so that's my little excuse for my qualifier. The thing that I see missing here, or maybe in here somewhere, is financial stability. And by that, I mean, I think in the last six or seven years, the reserve that we had when we came on board, when David came on board, and what we've brought it up to, and now it's starting to slide a little bit. Financial stability, I think, has to fit in there somewhere. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
You want, you have other questions, though? You wanted to go on?
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate the feedback, so, but, but just, again, I want to make sure I'm clear that, again, we'll acknowledge your relationships, whether it's a pension or a debt service. I mean, but we, we have that awareness, I think, on a task force, so thank you. The third question. "Over the past several years, the city council has chosen not to raise the property tax rate. Whether the more focus has been placed on specific targeted user fees. While neither approach is absolute, conceptually, the user fee is more consistent with asking those who consume more services to pay more for what they use." And you've heard me say again, the water bill is a perfect example of it. We don't all pay the same water bill. Philosophical, uh, it, uh, who consume more services to pay more for what they use, while the property tax balances costs to residents, helping to subsidize greater users of city services. We've talked about that. I don't need to rehash that. My question is, philosophically, would you like to see the Budget Task Force continue focusing on user fees? In other words, in, in principle, the philosophy of those who consume more city services pay more? Or would you like to see the Budget Task Force focus on something, something else like property taxes to help cover the city's operational expense? So I will, again, it's, it's, in, in, in the, in the, the large picture, again, we'll come back, we'll be back with details, in the large picture, do, do, do we want to continue with the principle of if, if you consume more services, we will ask you to pay more? Or do you want us to look at something that creates more of a, of a subsidy of users regardless of, of what's consumed or what's used?
Alderman Payman.
Can you give me an example for how we would use property tax? I mean, how you would use fees to pay for operational expenses?
Solid waste. So if, if we adjust.
So you're looking at that now, is?
Not necessarily that we're looking at that now, but that's just what, what kind of came to mind. I mean, we're, we're, and these are some questions we've had in our budget workshops before too.
Anything besides solid waste that you can come up with?
I could give you a couple too, if I had just, one of the things we've talked about before is, we have had no increases in liquor license fees since 1982. And I can tell you the cost associated with liquor administration has increased even in two years since I've been here. A hundred percent of the costs of a liquor administration have been borne by the taxpayers, not the people who make a profit from it. We don't charge anything, for example, for video poker. It's a $149 million industry. Every other city that, of our, you know, metro city does. So there, there are some things, in other words, that could be used to, or police officer buyback. I mean, there's all kinds of things that could be used to give relief to the taxpayer, because they're paying all the costs. Those are just some that, obviously there's water, and then there's, you know, or trash and things like that. But then there are other things that the, the taxpayers have been subsidizing.
And, and we're going to come back with some options, but, but I'm, I'm just interested more broadly speaking. I mean, whether it's the police buyback downtown, which is something we've talked about, right? Or, or the, the user fees. And, and actually, that came up in our conversation today as part of Patty Lynn's presentation. Some of the, the review now that's underway, whether it's the liquor license or some of the other permits and such that haven't been, again, embarrassingly reviewed for decades, right? So, so in principle, that's kind of.
I think that's the.
So, so again, what I'm, and I guess you guys have comments too.
Let's see, I'll just go from my leftover. Alderman Schmidt, Black and Frue.
I'm going to reflect here on things that I've heard over the years from residents, particularly in the west side, the older part of town, about property tax. And I think that we've had some mission drift with our property tax. And I would point to my general understanding that pensions tend to be paid from property tax. And that's because we're behind. We're, we're doing less and less of that. And what we've done in not raising property taxes is to begin to impose a series of fees and taxes that many of which I consider to be, and I, I think I speak for many residents, considered to be very regressive. So you get a utility tax, and we're using utility tax money for, I think for pensions, pensions. And, you know, with the people who, I, I get the point about if you use more water, you pay more for it. But when, when you have people who can't make their basic electric bill and then we add another few cents onto it, that really is a regressive tax. So, when I look at this, I, I think that maybe we need to get back to what, what is the intention of the property tax? What are the core services that we expect people, that people expect to be covered by property tax? And then what are the peripheral things that they actually have a choice about? And I don't, I don't necessarily think that, you know, that something like, I, I struggle with solid waste being in an enterprise fund, for example. I see it as a core service, so.
And, and that's, that's a fair comment. And, and, and I've thought some about that too. And, and so there's, part of the, the conversation I have with myself, Karen, is whether we pay for it with a user fee or out of property taxes, it still has to be paid for. I mean, it's still money out of, out of the, the resident's pocket. And, and so, does that, does that impact the conversation I have with myself at all about how it's paid for as much as the fact that it has to be paid for if it's going to be a service provided by the city?
Right, but people use, we, we don't, we don't charge if you call the police or call the fire department. I mean, I think there's some things that have fundamentally been shared services that are, that are a common good. And, and I'm not sure that I know, I couldn't sit here and rattle off what they are, but I think we've drifted away from that a little bit and started backfilling with tax rates and fees.
We're going to need to move on fairly quickly here, because I know you've got some more questions.
I've just got one more question.
Scott and, and Alderman Frue.
You guys know where I'm at. You said it perfectly.
Alderman Frue. I'll try to be political here and say that maybe it's a combination of two. I think maybe better for others to validate this statement, but I think we've got people coming in Bloomington Normal that are astounded by the level of our property taxes. And that could be state of Illinois-driven or school-driven. It can be a mix of things. We keep espousing that we get 13, 13% of the dollar. Bottom line is, property taxes are high, and people are making choices on that when they come to Illinois and Bloomington. So, I understand the user fee, and I understand the regression and all that. And maybe there is a balance, and one thing maybe we failed to do is we've left property taxes flat for so long, and maybe the slower increase might have been a better way to go. Very quickly, I think we like to see others pay whenever it's possible. So by that, I mean whether it's the, we've talked about the out-of-town, out-of-county people that are coming to spend their sales retail dollars here. Maybe it's hotel motel. I'm not sure what it is. But I think we need to look at that. And also, David said it a while ago, I think we're providing regional services and not getting regional revenue. And we talked about the, the firing range. We've talked about the zoo. We've talked about our golf courses, our cyber crime unit in the police department, on and on and on. I think we really have to look at how we're compensated. And so I think there might be some revenue potential from some of those other users of, we're the ones carrying the bag. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wambway, and then we have another question, because we have to really be quick here.
One quick question. Where does the, the conversation about property tax fees fit into this at the state level? Right, at the state level. Are we considering that? What are we going to do with the fees then if the property taxes are frozen?
Well, that's part of what he's asking our opinion. Well, actually, they're a little lower. In 2012, they lowered, the council lowered them by about, just about a half a million and a buck and a half last year. So they, you pay less to the ci, to the city than you did five years ago in private taxes, just in dollars.
So, or maybe are you reacting to this, this, at least this topic? It's being discussed in Springfield about the freeze in property taxes? Okay.
I see, I'm sorry.
And, and see, that, that, that again is, but there's still some unanswered questions about what, what our brethren and sisterin in Springfield are going to do for us, or, or to us, or with us here in a few weeks. So, so that's why I'm trying not to focus too much on specifics as much as, as just try, try to get a, a philosophical sense of a majority of the council. So, so in the interest, I'm, 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 again, going to ask, then if you would rather see the, the Budget Task Force focus more on, on, on the principle of those who consume more services pay more, then I, then, or, or will, will create a little bit more of a, of a constant subsidized cost by way of, of property taxes or some other things? I'm just trying to have a sense of the philosophical position of a majority of the council. So, I need user fees, and I think Jeff, I can, we can do this kind of thing, right? Okay?
User fees, or, so you have user fees?
User fees, or, so you have user fees or public goods or a combination?
Again, rather than user fees, let me talk about the principle here. Do people, those who consume more city services should pay more for their higher level of consumption, or everybody should just, you know, will kind of have everybody paying closer to the same regardless of whatever level of services that they use? So consume more services, pay more?
I think it's, I get what you're asking, but it's a little, I want to parse it out just a little bit, not to overly complicate it. So like, I could argue that, like, with property taxes, like, you know, when you send a truck out to the older parts of town, they can hit more truck, more houses on a block than somebody on the far east side of the community. And so proportionally, if that's tied to property tax, then it's not equal, because the people who are, and have fewer blocks are paying less for, it can, proportionally than those on the older parts of town. So I think I would rather frame it as, would we prefer to identify areas in which there's common good, like parks and such, that we can target more towards the property tax and maybe move away from user fees, or a combination of both for some of them? So like Normal, for instance, with their solid waste, has a percentage tied to property tax, and then a percentage tied to user fees? Because you don't, it doesn't have to be one and all. Maybe I'm overcomplicating.
I mean, at this point, we're going to have to, we actually have used up all our time, and we have one more topic, so we...
And I just have one more question.
Okay.
What I'm hearing is a balance.
I think you're hearing a balance.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. Okay. You have one more question, and then we...
And this is real simple. The BTF is a short-term group. As part of the final recommendation, would you like to see the task force develop and deliver a repeatable process for the council and staff to use in outlying budget years? In other words, and I'm assuming the answer to that is yes, but I would not presume without asking. So is there anybody that would answer that as no?
I'm unsure.
I'll make the best of it.
Okay, what I hear is yes. Sorry, thank you.
May I make one brief suggestion? Would you also consider a long-range budget? Not just a one-year, but a three-year, or five-year, or whatever? I mean, kind of do a little outward...
It could be, I'm just throwing this out, I mean, obviously, I was promoting our pension policy big time. I'm proud of the fact that we got an award last year, but it could be that you say, hey, we've done, we really went overboard, let's flatten that out for a few years, for three years, and then, you know, get us through some tough times. Those would be some things. Just to clarify, when I met with the budget task force, I talked for about, I think I said 60 seconds, I might have been 90 seconds, but, and then I left. But basically, what I tried to make clear is, I would hope that as much as possible, everything would be on the table. And I said, from the standpoint of council members, I would urge everyone to keep an open mind, keep everything on the table, so that we can get several different possible options. I said, as mayor, I would, if this council agrees, let's say if the task force comes up with five packages, and this council agrees to one of those, if that closes our budget gap, I will sign it. And I won't pick it apart, I won't use a line item veto to go through anything. If we agree, and it closes our gap, I will sign it, so far as I was concerned, everything was on the table.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, members of the council.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Dave. Appreciate it very, very much. Now, we do need to move on, we have 15 minutes, and I think we can do a solid 15 minutes. Alderwoman Howman, we have a review and discussion regarding the city of Bloomington vision, mission, and goals. And let me just say that this is also related to, we were supposed to meet, one possibility was May 9th. Obviously, we didn't meet May 9th to kind of work together as a group, so we're going to be working towards something like that before the end of the summer as a council, as part of this. Alderwoman Howman.
Thank you. Kind of weird-looking, this direction, instead of, oh. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you recommendations of a work group that was focused on making recommendations concerning the city's mission, vision, and values. Background for some of you, a reminder for some of the rest of you, in November, at our two-day retreat, we started looking at possible revisions to the city's mission, vision, and core values from the 10-year plan that was developed and adopted in 2010. In the interest of time, at that retreat, as in the interest of time now, we tabled that. Terry and David agreed to move forward with this, with a work group, and... Oh, here we are. And the work group included aldermen, department heads, staff, and some Bloomington 101 grads. So it was made up of an interesting group. We brought the Bloomington 101 grads in at the end to, into the discussion. So our first question, and we actually started talking about this at the retreat, was, are the mission, vision, and values for the city council, for the city council and staff, or for everyone? And this had been discussed at the November retreat, and it was decided overwhelmingly that the mission, vision, and values were for all of us, so that we're all pulling the rope in the same direction, enhancing the relationships between city council and staff and the citizens. We use these definitions for our work group. Mission being a statement of purpose for an organization, declaration of an organization's core purpose and focus, vision, something to be pursued, declaration of the organization's objectives intended to guide its internal decision-making, and finally, values, qualities that define expectations at their most basic level, hopefully establishing a foundation on which trust is built. So the 2025 mission, I have to tell you, when I read this the first time, it was like, I'm sorry, but it was like, this is, this is not inspiring. So the mission that we have now, and it's on the back of all of our business cards, is the mission of the city of Bloomington is to be financially responsible, providing quality, basic municipal services at the best value. The city engages residents and partners with others for community benefit. Like I say, it's not, to me personally, not really inspiring. The work group recommendation, and this was based on some of the work that was done at the retreat, we changed a little bit, but to lead, serve, and uplift the city of Bloomington. We felt this was a mission that we could all, aldermen, city staff, residents, we could all embrace. It can serve as a filter to help determine a guide for actions for us as a team. The vision, the, from 2025, it's a fourfold vision. I'm, I mean, I'm not going to read it to you. We felt that the last, the jewel of Midwest cities was really what we wanted to be, a jewel of Midwest cities. We added that, we added "a" because the city of Chicago has a very similar vision, and we wanted to distinguish ours from the city of Chicago, nothing against our neighbors to the north. Core values, or our core beliefs or values, were six from the 2025. We came up with three, and this was probably the hardest for us to do. We, we had a laundry list, and the aldermen, each of you had an opportunity to ring in on that. We focused it down to three: service-centered, results-driven, and inclusive. And now, the idea is that we, as a city council team, and each of the departments, can go back and determine for themselves, what does service-centered look like? What does results-driven look like? How would we know if we're being inclusive? So each entity can go back and take a look at that and see what happens. So, summary, this is what the work group is recommending for consideration. Mission to lead, serve, and uplift the city of Bloomington. Our vision, a jewel of Midwest cities, and our values to be service-centered, results-driven, and inclusive. And I knew we weren't going to have 15 minutes, so we kept it short.
Well, we can continue this a little bit, here, we have a few minutes. And then, just again to clarify, initially, when we had, just before the new aldermen and women were sworn in, David and I talked about having a group where we all begin to work together, because we've had some new people, and then, you know, only one new person out of the elections, but that does affect a group of 10 people, even one. And so we wanted to kind of figure out where we go from here, and how we work together. And it was, we've had some difficulties in facilitating, and then schedules, and whatever, because I know our first target date was May 9th, but obviously, we didn't meet that, but we're, we'll definitely be doing something, obviously, before we go anywhere near the process of the budget situation. So maybe August or late July, I don't know, I'll be talking with David, and maybe we coordinate all schedules. Thank you. Questions or comments?
I hate to rain on the parade again, but I'm not in favor of changing the mission statement. I think that we have had numerous problems maintaining financial responsibility and providing those quality, basic municipal services. Yes, it's boring. Sorry, that's what we're doing here. And we've got an issue trying to maintain that. And so that's what I signed up for, that's why I was elected, that's why I'm here, that's what I want to maintain. Thanks.
First of all, thank you for your efforts. Who were the other aldermen that were?
Johnny was part of it, and a number of you responded to emails that we had throughout.
Okay, well, thanks for that. So let me just ask a question before I comment. So it looks, it looks as if, it's, so less is more now. I mean, and what we've done is perhaps take things that were a little bit more tactical in nature, that may have been, or operational in nature, that were part of those higher-end statements, whether they were missions, or values, or whatever, and kind of streamline that a little bit. And so then, for instance, some of those other bullet points, some of those other things we talked about, I'm assuming, they kind of, they play out and are expressed in greater detail, in a little bit more of the tactical or the operational?
We started out with the information from the retreat, all those clip charts that we had, because there was, there was a lot of information on those, and so we used that as a stepping off point.
Yeah, I mean, I don't really have a strong sense one way or the other. I mean, I like the fact that, I mean, I'm always a fan of less is more, you know, and so here's that. I mean, to Kevin's point, I mean, there's some of those other, those other things, that the details will be played out elsewhere down below as we move from, from more strategic to tactical to operational, that type of thing. But, but, I mean, you've kept some things here, and you focused on some, on some good things, too. So again, thanks for the work.
One of the things that we did with, talking with the department heads that were part of this, was the mission is global, and then each department can add to it. So to lead, serve, and uplift the city of Bloomington by, and then each department can list out their key areas.
And just to say, I think, I appreciate all you've done with this, too. And I do say, when I, many times when I've read the mission statement, especially when, for example, when Chris Kuss and I went to LA, this is a year ago, October, and I'm giving my card, if somebody reads the back of that, it doesn't say, this is a city on the move, or we're energetic, or we're moving. Who is going to do that? And it's not a question of just being boring, Kevin, it's a question of floating, of swimming upstream in the international global economy. If we're a dynamic city and we're making progress, we convey that. I mean, so I like the values, because those are the three things, three of the many things I stressed when I was running. So, but I think it's something that is a shared idea and vision, and I think our citizens can agree on, and probably the council. But, excuse me, Alderman Schmidt.
Could you remind us, this, these statements are for all of us, the city staff and the citizens?
Yeah, we felt like it should be inclusive. I mean, it goes back to the value, that it should be something we hold each other accountable for, whether it's us holding the staff, the staff holding us, us holding our constituents. You know, these are the values that we feel are important for all of us to live together and play nice.
I have to think about this a little bit. I love the, I love the values statement a lot. The mission part of it, not so much. I'm not sure, there's something about it that doesn't convey to me, maybe what Kevin is saying, that there's a business component to our mission, and this feels almost spiritual.
Well, see, we have an opportunity, though. If we, what we were looking for was a mission for everyone. And then, like I said, the department heads actually came up with the idea that under that, they could incorporate their own mission. So, you know, we could add to it.
And I can see that playing itself out very nicely. I don't, I, I, thank you for all the work on this. This is, this is something to really chew on.
Something to think about, yeah.
Alderman Frue. If we had a stamp pad, I would rubber stamp it. And I say that because I think, as a council, we can be a little bit critical and wordsmith. It seems like we talk about mission, and vision, and values every year. And I just think we, it needs to be tweaked from time to time, but we need to stick with it and not be so concerned with getting it exact. Nobody's, we're not all going to agree on the same thing, so I appreciate your work.
Thanks.
Okay, anything else? Thank you, Diana. And actually, if you'll come on over here, so I can make sure that you're here, well, I want to have this all-important motion to adjourn. Do we have a motion? Moved by Alderman Black, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Schmidt, all in favor, say the vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned, and we'll see you in 12 minutes.